General public, that in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Little Lake Harbor Board of Education caused to be posted at the Office of the Board of Education, located at 307 Frog Pond Road, Little Lake Harbor, New Jersey and Saks on March 2nd, 2023, to the Asbury Park Press, Atlantic City Press, and to the Office of Municipal Clerk of Little Lake Harbor, a meeting notice setting forth the time, date, and location of this meeting. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Filicello?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Ms. Zalesdok?
Yeah.
Ms. Erber?
Here.
Ms. Semler?
Here.
Dr. Snyder?
Here.
You have four.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
May I motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Are there any questions? Do a vocal.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Barry? Yes. Ms. Zalesdok?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Ms. Semler?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, approval of the minutes, recommend a motion to approve the following minutes.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Zalesdok?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Ms. Semler?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now moving on to board presentations. George D. Mitchell Building Highlights. Students of the Month.
Thank you, so first off, thank you so much for having us tonight. We'd like to share with you some of the amazing things that are happening at the Mitchell School. And to do that, I have Michaela with me from Ms. McFarland's class. Michaela? Is Gianna here as well? One more call for Gianna? No? All right, all right, Michaela, you got this?
Good evening, I am Michaela. I am a student in Ms. McFarland's second grade class. I am excited to share some highlights from the Mitchell School. Read Across America Week was celebrated from March 2nd to March 6th. We had fun with our different theme days and enjoyed hearing from many guest readers. In fact, the month of March is dedicated to reading. On March 3rd, the second grade class held their music and art show. They sang songs from Susie Call the Musical. Staff, students, and parents enjoyed the show. On March 21st, we will celebrate World Down Syndrome Day by wearing yellow and blue. World Down Syndrome Day is observed in order to raise public awareness of Down Syndrome. The character trait for March is fairness. I am, we are learning that fair does not mean equal. Fairness is based on what each person needs. Fairness is also about playing black and rolls, taking turns, and sharing. Sharing and listening to, sharing and listening to others. Students are being noticed for doing what is right on our flight of fairness bulletin board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'll spread strong all day long.
Let's give her another hint. She practices with a partner and she did this all on her own and I'm so proud of you. Excellent job. Thank you. Okay, now for our Students of the Month. Our first student is from kindergarten, from Mrs. Natoli's class, Elizabeth Delisa. So Mrs. Natoli wrote, "I am proud to nominate Elizabeth as the kindergarten student of the month for February. Elizabeth exemplifies good character and is a role model to others. She is courageous and believes in making smart choices even when it might be difficult. Her positive voice can often be heard encouraging others to do so as well. Elizabeth leads by example and is a responsible, hardworking student who consistently demonstrates a positive attitude towards learning and trying her absolute best." Congratulations, Elizabeth. Our next student is in first grade from Mrs. Mason's class, Ariana Stein. Is she here? Well, let me read what Miss Mason wrote. "Ariana is a well-mannered first grader who is very respectful to her peers and teachers. Every day she enters room 211 and says, 'Good morning, Mrs. Mason.' Ariana's enthusiasm for learning is contagious and has caught on in room 1M.A. She demonstrates courage daily, helping others to do the right thing. It is my privilege to have Ariana in my class this year." And our next student of the month is from second grade, Ms. McFarland's class, Gabrielle Scibetta. Gabby is such a kind and helpful student in the classroom. She shows a great deal of courage by participating and helping others in need. She is not afraid to make mistakes and always tries her best. I am so proud of all she has accomplished this year. And our final student is Naraya Brooks from Mr. Most's room. Mr. Most wrote, "Naraya is a responsible, hardworking, and conscientious student. She always tries her best, is always willing to help others, and acts as a positive role model for the children in the school. Naraya has shown courage facing new challenges every day. She is a pleasure to have in my class." And you can see the theme there, our courage, or our character trait for February was courage. Congratulations to all the Students of the Month, I'm so proud of you.
Frog Pond Building Highlights.
Good evening, everyone, and tonight for our Building Highlights, we have members of our student government. Mr., is Nico here? I didn't see Nico. I saw you, right?
Yeah.
Come on up, you.
I'm gonna read for Nico.
Good afternoon. To close out the month of February, our students and families set a new Frog Pond School record for the most money raised during the American Heart Challenge.
As a school, we've raised $26,924.06. This is amazing. Now March is here and there are already signs of spring in the air and days are getting longer. We're looking to the future here at Frog Pond School. Our after-school programs are still in full swing and keeping everyone busy. We will also be having two early dismissal days on March 22nd and 23rd due to the parent-teacher conferences. Tuesday, the 22nd, will be evening conferences as Wednesday, the 23rd, will be afternoon conferences.
In the classrooms, the students are working hard and having fun. Note that trimester two will be ending on March 17th. Report cards will be available for parents to view on March 33rd. If you have not logged into OnCourse or have questions about logging in, please contact the main office for assistance. The best way, this is the best way to keep up, to stay up to date on your students' grades and attendance. You can also view emergency contact information for your child and send an update request if necessary.
Now for some updates from the student government. Earth Day is approaching and the Environmental Commission is hosting a community cleanup event Saturday, April 22nd, beginning at 9:00 a.m. Registration for the information can be found on the Little Lake Harbor website and we'll also be distributing flyers for that as well.
We are also working with Kathy Tucker from the Environmental Commission to create a float that will be in the Memorial Day Parade. We are collecting recycled goods from sixth-grade homerooms and providing the commission with the supplies as well as a blueprint for the float. We are continuing to plan a family trivia night fundraiser at the school. More information to come about that soon. We, we are wishing you all a wonderful start to spring.
Excellent job. And our student government has been so active this year. We really appreciate all the hard work they're doing as a group. All right, for our Frog Pond Students of the Month, our first student is from Ms. Gillis's class. Ms. Lydia Becker. Is Lydia here? Come on up, Lydia. Here's what Ms. Gillis had to say about Lydia. Lydia is the epitome of an exemplary third grader, possessing an infectious smile and engaging personality that brains up the entire classroom. As a diligent listener and a model of responsible behavior, Lydia consistently follows classroom rules and puts in maximum effort every day, setting a high standard of excellence for her peers to emulate. Her exceptional work habits and positive attitude make her an outstanding role model for her classmates. Additionally, her kindness and helpfulness towards her peers and teachers creates a positive supporting learning environment that fosters collaboration and mutual respect. Lydia is a true joy to have in the classroom and I consider myself fortunate to have her as one of my students this year. So congratulations, Lydia. And from Mrs. Dancison and Mrs. Russo's class, we have Molly Wurassila. Molly, come on up. Molly, this, there is so much to say about her. Molly is kind, considerate, and a hard worker. She's a good friend, she's an even better student. There isn't a time that Molly doesn't smile when her eyes meet yours. Molly is always focused when you're teaching, she always gets right to work, she always perseveres and tries her best. It doesn't all come so easily for Molly, but you'd never know it. She's the most easygoing, quiet, not really shy, but never too loud kind of kid. Molly is a friend to all and we are lucky to have her in our class. We wish you, or we wish we had a class full of Mollies. Congratulations. Our next student of the month comes from Ms. Worrles and Ms. Benson's homeroom. Our five Worrles Benson crew recognizes Sophia Conklin as our Student of the Month. Sophia here? Come on up, Sophia. Congratulations. She demonstrates kindness and caring towards her classmates and teachers. She works very hard and is a willing helper. She is polite and respectful. Sophia has demonstrated leadership and community involvement recently in our fifth-grade learning project, where she participated with a speaking part in our promotional video for their service project. Sophia assisted her classmates in providing bags of smiles for area nursing home residents. Sophia is also a dedicated member of our school course. In class, she demonstrates an organized effort and participation. Sophia shines in her schoolwork and does particularly well with finding text evidence in her daily reading tasks. Her Reader's Notebook is full of details and neatly presented. Overall, our Sophia is a motivated learner who always tries her best. Congratulations, Sophia. Our next student of the month comes from Ms. Randall's class, Ms. Liliana Russell. Liliana? So Liliana is not here. Ms. Randall said Lily is always smiling and happy, she always tries her best, and is quick to help whenever needed in the classroom. She is a good friend to all and I love having her in my class. So congratulations to Liliana. And last but not least, from the Green Team and Mr. Henderson's homeroom, Alex Robitaille. Come on up, Alex. Alex is an excellent student in every class. She's a student who is very pleasant to be around, a person whose behavior and work habits serve as good examples to her, to her peers. Alex will be successful in whatever challenges she meets because of her willingness to work hard, ability, her ability to be responsible, and her strong character. We are proud to present Alex Robitaille as our February Student of the Month. So congratulations to Alex. We are proud to present Alex Robitaille as our February Student of the Month. So congratulations to Alex.
Okay, now employee.
We have our Volunteer of the Month.
Oh, okay, Volunteers.
Mr. Mike Lees. I'm sorry, Mr. Mike Lees. Come on up, Mr. Lees. Real quick, Mr. Lees, I'm gonna read what was prepared for you, but Mike is one of our mentors who always goes above and beyond. He's always willing to volunteer his time on Wednesdays to sit and have lunch and interact one-on-one with his students. Mike listens and pays close attention to what his mentees say and always with a happy smile on his face. His kindness and caring heart puts an instant smile on the students' faces. Lastly, Mike is always available and willing to come in even at the last minute if needed. Thank you, Mike, for your dedication to our students.
Okay, now moving on to the Employee of the Year by building. First, Dr. Flynn.
Okay, so I am thrilled to share with you that Mrs. Brianne DeAngelis is our ECC Teacher of the Year for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And I will read a few things that her colleagues said about her. Mrs. DeAngelis is an amazing teacher. She knows her students and their families well, often advocating for them. Her students thrive in her room while having fun and enjoying preschool. She positively influences every student in her class while maintaining classroom control and fairness. Mrs. DeAngelis has a great understanding of both general education and special education programs and is always willing to go out of her way to help. She has positive relationships with other staff members and shares materials, ideas, and techniques with her colleagues. Congratulations for being selected as the ECC Teacher of the Year. Okay, our Support Staff Member of the Year is Mrs. Kim Leeny. Mrs. Leeny has dedicated many years of service to our children, teachers, and community. Mrs. Leeny is that person who you can count on to get a job done, no matter how big or small, inside the classroom or out. She graciously takes on any task put before her, such as modeling for or training new paraprofessional staff. She's a rock star at bus duty and getting the lunch carts back and forth. Most importantly, she generously shares her love and support with our students and teachers every day and does so always with a smile on her face. Congratulations. And our Custodian of the Year is Ricky Lagon. He's not here, but I absolutely have to read about him. Mr. Ricky Lagon is always working and always smiling. Early in the morning, you will see him cleaning the preschool playgrounds and getting them ready for the day. Did someone have an accident, vomit? The playground is wet? No worries. Mr. Ricky is there to save the day. He is a human urgent of the Energizer Bunny. He literally never stops. From the minute he clocks in until the minute he clocks out, he's taking care of the ECC. Wiping down doorknobs, from wiping down doorknobs to major catastrophes, Ricky has it covered. The staff and students adore him and love seeing him in the hallway each day. And did I mention, every time you see him, he is smiling and has a big smile. Congratulations for the well-deserved recognition.
Now, Mrs. Amy Nass for George J. Mitchell.
Thank you. Just waiting for my presentation to pop up. Alright, so, congratulations to our George J. Mitchell Staff Members of the Year. You could not have selected better people. So for our first staff member, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Lisa Nino. Mrs. Nino is an incredible educator. She sets the bar high for herself and her students. She does a fantastic job providing her students with rigorous and engaging educational experiences. She inspires them to be lifelong learners and problem solvers. In addition to all that she does in the classroom, Mrs. Nino is very involved in our school community. We are so, so very fortunate to have her as part of our GJM family. Congratulations, Mrs. Nino. For our Support Staff Member of the Year, Mrs. Dawn Gaines. Mrs. Gaines is an outstanding paraprofessional. She has been described as a true gift. Mrs. Gaines is always looking to improve her craft. She seeks out advice when needed and has a genuine love for her students. She is a true asset to our Special Education Department. Congratulations, Mrs. Gaines. And for our Custodian of the Year, Jose Castaneda. He's here tonight. Mr. Castaneda is a valued member of the GJM family. He is friendly and kind and takes great pride in his work. He pays attention to detail and works hard to keep our classrooms sparkling clean. Thank you for all that you do. Congratulations.
All right, in for Frog Pond, we're actually gonna present as a team and our first person, the Teacher of the Year, Mr. Nazarak, has known Ms. Cook for a long time, so he's gonna read hers first.
Thank you again, that's someone referring to my age. Thank you today. All right, we are very proud of the Frog Pond School. To our Office Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Patsy Cook, who teaches in grade eight and six. Patsy is not only knowledgeable and hardworking, but is a master at interpersonal relationships with both students and other staff members. She's kind, genuine, trustworthy, a friend to all, colleagues, and teachers and every adult she comes into contact with. Everything Patsy does in her classroom has a purpose. She takes advantage, and we can attest to this literally, of every second of the day with her students to help them grow, not just academically, but also help them become better human beings. And we all know how important that is. She is an excellent role model for all. We don't just mean for her students, but she is a role model to other teachers with her work ethic and how she approaches her job. Patsy has spent the majority of her time here in Little Lake Harbor as a fifth-grade teacher, only recently moving to grade six. But if you went into her classroom, you would think that she was a grade-six teacher for many, many years. She adapted to the curriculum and to new colleagues really with no problem at all. It was really seamless. The Little Lake Harbor School District and certainly the Frog Pond School is very fortunate to have Patsy as a member of our teaching staff. Congratulations, Patsy. Come on over.
The Frog Pond Support Person of the Year is Jackie Seaver. Jackie is an amazing paraprofessional and amazing person. She is always encouraging the students she works with to be the very best that they can be. She has a kind and direct manner as she does her job, and she is always willing to lend a hand. She is calm, cool, and collected at all times. Anytime I've seen Jackie having to rise to the occasion, it's always with a level head, quickly assisting anyone who needs it. She's excellent at reading her students and quickly adapting to their needs. Whenever Jackie is out with her class in a special area, classroom or otherwise, she's always the first to help the teacher. She understands the challenges her class may pose and is quick to step up. In an ideal world, we could make copies of Jackie to put in every classroom. Congratulations.
All right, and our Frog Pond Custodian of the Year, Mr. Mike Jennings. Unfortunately, Mike could not be here tonight because of a family commitment, but let me read what other staff members said about Mike. Mike works extremely hard. He is always on the move from one task to the next and always has a smile on his face. He willingly works with teachers and takes students who have shown interest and allows them to do small jobs with him a few days a week. He's never bothered by the extra help and goes the extra mile to talk to students as they work with him. He's a positive person who is always willing to help and his positivity does not go unnoticed. Mike is always kind and lends a hand in all situations. Well deserved, Mike. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jennings? I'll wait for my slides. And next on to the Administrative Building. I know that oftentimes people don't visit over there as much as we'd like them to, but a lot of hard work goes in and the staff over there deserves all of the credit. However, for tonight, we are going to recognize Ms. Marielle Granny Eric as our Admin Person of the Year in the Admin Building. She is a District Administrative Assistant. She is my right hand, as it says up there. She's extremely knowledgeable and always willing to lend a helping hand to anyone, whether it's a staff member, a parent that calls, or just someone that doesn't really know much about our district. She's a leader within the building. She oftentimes will organize different events that we're doing and just really helps with the overall workload that that building has to accomplish. She's really always willing to go the extra mile. If you come to our board meetings, and I hope you all do, she's here, every single one of them, making sure that things go smoothly and that if there's any agenda questions that we can't answer, she's always here to lend support. She's extremely friendly and accommodating, never says no to anything. We always say, "It's fine, it's fine, everything's fine," and she gets the job done. We are extremely lucky that she's on our team and I'd like to congratulate Marielle.
Okay, Dr. Waculay would like me to announce that there's cake for all the staff members that were recognized and their families. And also for the students that were recognized, we have cookies and juice. Don't forget to grab that if you want to leave. Otherwise, we're moving on with the meeting.
Yep, the cake's out in the hallway.
Cake is out in the hallway. Thank you.
There's enough cake for everybody out there, so help yourself. Sorry, you don't get cake. You, is that your dinner?
Yes.
There's cookies too, Mike, if you want some.
Okay, now moving on to the initial budget review presented by Mr. Robert Green, Business Administrator.
Thank you, Mrs. Erber. We'll go on to the next slide. Thank you. Now, we wanna, we wanna thank the Board Budget Committee. We have the following board members, Dr. Snyder, Board President, Ms. Erber, the Board Vice President, and Mr. Philichella, Board Member. A lot of hours go into being on this committee. I can't imagine it's all that much fun. I find it interesting. I enjoy the budget. But it is a necessity, evil, and we must do. So we thank you for your time and dedication that you put into this. Okay, so, just wanna outline the budget process. And this is, this is something that's already been discussed by the committee members. So this is more for the board members who are not on the committee. So the budget process starts in October and November. And at that time, all the administrators perform the gathering of information and entering into the, what we call, the Genesis System. That's our in-house accounting system. And everybody has a piece of the budget. Mr. Cole over in the back, he has the facilities and we have Curriculum Department and Special Ed Department. And everybody has to enter in their area of the budget. Once that's all entered in, or while that's being entered in, the business office is also entering in information. And most importantly, the staffing. So the staffing, we have salary guides already in the system through the payroll. And so with a couple of clicks of the buttons, we can just simply move all the staff into their proper positions in the budget. And it's done electronically. And of course, we do a double check to make sure that everybody got brought over and got brought over at the correct salary. But that's how the salaries get put into the budget. Then anybody who's outside a collective bargaining agreement, who's not in a, who's not on the salary guide, we have to take those salaries and their contracts and they have to enter that information manually. It's a little bit of a cumbersome process, but we have everybody in. Then that, the information is reviewed by my office. And we have to look for places where we're maybe a little bit over. Cut a little bit of fat on the lamb. We don't wanna over-budget any, any areas. And once that is completed, we hand the budget over to the Superintendent and the Board Committee. and the board committee. And then they review the budget and ask lots of questions. And we see if there's any more reductions to be able to have a balanced budget. And that's where we are at this time. We have a balanced budget, ready to be presented to the board for initial adoption. And that happens tonight. Next week, on the 21st, we'll have our meeting with the county office, which is an extension of the State Department of Education. And they will review the budget. And then the following month, on April 26th, we'll have a public hearing and the final adoption of the budget. So we move over to the next. And just to be aware, the information that's in this packet has been simplified greatly. There's stats of information. If any of the board members who are not on the committee do want to sit and review anything, feel free to see me, and we can sit down. But we try to make this as simple as possible so that...
A big one made.
I didn't say that, Mrs. Mary. So move on to the next slide. This is a very simplified, vivid summary. We have revenue of $24.8 million. We're also moving money from our maintenance reserve account in the amount of $96,000 and change. We're moving $320,000 and change from our capital reserve account. And we're also using budgeted fund balance of $3.1 million to get a total revenue of $28.4 million. And on the flip side, we also have $28.4 million worth of expenditures. And that's our budget simplified, very simplified. On the next page, we're going to detail the maintenance and the capital projects that I just outlined for the revenues. We did have to give up a pickup truck this year. It was old. It fell apart underneath, and we had to get rid of it. So we'll need a new pickup truck. That's going to help with plowing. We save a lot of money from plowing in-house. Our own maintenance staff does all the plowing when we have a snowstorm. We also have a scissor lift to be replaced. The old scissor lift is right here in the closet. And it's just too unsafe to be having. People go up to those lights up at the top of the ceiling to be changing light bulbs. And then we have an OSHA safety label printer that'll print things like, it'll print basically anything, small signs, large signs, related to safety, and just signs in general around the district. And with our capital projects, we had our insurance company recommend that we install surge protectors on all the main electrical panels district-wide in each building. So we're going to go with that project. And then we have two HVAC units at the George Mitchell School that are going to be replaced, units number two and number eight. Okay, this slide outlines our tax levy just for the general fund. We also have a part of the tax levy for the debt service. But just for the general fund, there is a 2% maximum cap limit set forth by the state, meaning that we are allowed to increase the tax levy by 2%. If you want to go above 2%, you either have to use your banked cap. That would be tax levy that you haven't used in the past three years. Or you can go out for public vote. The district has chosen to go with the 2% cap to raise taxes $269,652. Okay, the next slide outlines our state aid. This year, we had a decrease in state aid of $429,456. It's quite a shock to the districts. We did not expect this. However, that is one of the things we have to deal with when compiling this year's snow body. Because that's quite a challenge. Some of the educational highlights we want to point out tonight. We have a new curriculum that's being implemented called Ready Mathematics. We also have the Foundations. It's a continued program. It's a phonics program. And we have the IXL. This is in response to interventions. And it highlights English Language Arts and the Math Program. And that's the budget, very simplified. So now we'll take any questions from any board members.
Do we know the reason for the decrease in state aid?
Not, I can't say we know exactly. I can tell you why. So Adjustment Aid is where the decrease came in. There's five types of state aid that we receive. Adjustment Aid is the only one area where we have received a decrease. Adjustment Aid was put in place back in 2008 when the new funding formula was adopted during the Christie administration. And Adjustment Aid was designed to help districts who were going to lose a lot of money from the new state aid formula. And the idea was that it was going to be phased out over time slowly so the districts didn't get any hit. Most districts did not get that phase out. They just continued to get the same amount of Adjustment Aid throughout the years. And I guess this year, they decided it's time to catch up. And so they just all at once started phasing out, all at once took it to the finals.
So we take other districts as well?
Oh, we were one of the lighter districts to receive this. Yeah, yes. Some of the districts, it was devastating, into the millions, tens of millions.
So how does the state determine that, though? Do you know?
There's a funding formula.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a complete funding formula with lots of details.
Yeah. So these funds that we lost, we didn't know that we were going to lose these funds?
Not until...
They give us this aid, and then all of a sudden, it's like, "No, you're not going to get this anymore"? They don't give you a heads up?
That's correct.
Or two?
No, they don't. The state, the governor has his budget address on February 28th. And then on March 2nd is when they announce the state aid. And that's when we find out.
Okay.
Came as a shock. And is there any crystal ball forecast about the other ones? Are they sound or...? They just remain, they remained flat. So we can count on them for next year? We really, you can never really predict with state aid. Oh, okay. Never really predict with state aid. We hope that they at least remain flat. We'd like to see an increase. Last year, we had a 2% increase. This year, the other four areas were flat. And the Adjustment Aid, even though it was hit pretty hard, it's still kind of maybe not expected but understood, right? As opposed to the other ones, I mean. I'm just trying to get a handle on that. And you know, you can help me, is the future. The last thing I want to see is someone who, quite honest, worked in education, and you hire people, and then you got to let them go. I just, you know, don't want to see that. If we have them, I'd like to see a commitment to them. And just worry about the future, that's all. We try our best. Yeah, okay, we try our best.
Sorry, another question. How do SRR funds play into this? Because we're going to be looking at a decrease there, right, with SRR funds?
That's correct. The SRR funds run out next year.
Okay, which is related to the state emergency, right?
That was, that's right.
Okay. Okay, so next year, this is going to look...
We only want to concentrate on, yeah, we want to get through this year first. If this little pain is possible.
I just have a question concerning the tax levy. Is it too early to ask the household impact for $100,000? When will that happen?
No, it's not too early to ask. The county Board of Taxation voted on the new rates in 2023 on March 9th. They just haven't posted them on their website. So I made a phone call to see if I could get the information. I'm hoping to get a call back with the information. As soon as I have that information, I'll share that with the board. It should be available in plenty of time for the April public hearing. But I thought it would be able to be posted by now. It's not. So I've given a phone call. Hopefully, they'll call me back within a few days or a day.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Margaret. Moving on to the Board Superintendent.
So I only have one thing this evening. One of our board members, Ms. Martha June Palin, was a board member for seven years. Unfortunately, she passed away last weekend. And I just want to say a few words about her. She was actually 94 years old, and her time on the board was absolutely amazing. She was just the sweetest, sharpest, most dedicated board member. She always got her packet a week early to read through it because she didn't use a computer. And she'd come pick up her packet, and she would read it front to back and have all her questions ready. And it was just amazing to me how she just was so sharp and remembered so many things and just was so extremely supportive of everyone, students, families, administration, teachers. She just was an advocate for everyone. Most of all, she had 12 children, one girl, which was Trina, who works here for us still. And she just was so proud of everything Trina did. So when Trina did a lot of the Green Team stuff and things for the earth and the environment, she was the first one to talk about it and just a sweet, sweet woman. And Trina wanted to know that, you know, as she said, she said she was surrounded by family and friends and went peaceful in her sleep. So it was, she lived a wonderful life. And we just want to recognize her at the board meeting because we appreciate all that she's done for this district.
Thank you for doing that. Is her daughter an educator, teacher?
She's a paraprofessional, and she runs our Green Team.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to residents forum, agenda items only. The Board of Education now welcomes the public to comment on the items which are on the agenda tonight. Community members should first try to resolve their concerns by speaking directly to the school administrators before bringing their concerns to the board. It may not always be possible or appropriate for the board to directly answer questions during the public comment period. Each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes to make their statement. No one may speak more than once on the same topic. You are required to give your name and address before speaking. Please keep your comments respectful and non-defamatory and maintain a level of decorum appropriate for a public meeting where minors may be in the audience. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the Board Work Session. Okay, Board President, update. I'd just like to mention that the policy that was revised for legal access to our board solicitor is on the agenda tonight. And that's all for the policy, unless I'm missing something. And the Budget Committee, would you like to give an update on the Budget Committee? I guess you heard the budget tonight. I would like to give an update that we met several times with the admin and Mr. Green. And we've been able to, I'm happy to say, keep that budget at the 2% cap and no more and have a balanced budget for the presentation for the public. So looking forward to that.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Green and the administration for working together and coming up with something that we can all be proud of.
And one more thing under Work Session. I'd like to see a board member on the Negotiation Committee. So I don't know if we can discuss that later via email. There's current negotiations going on, right, so we can appoint a board member? Okay. Does anyone else have anything to say, to offer? The teachers' contract was just negotiated last year, right? So is it the paraprofessional?
Yeah, this support staff, so there's Paris and other people in that because students may need it next.
So when does it happen again?
So we are set to start negotiating with teachers again. I think this summer, because it will be, this summer, they'll be one year out from being expired, so we want to start early.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree with Mrs. Herbert that the board should be involved with that. And just a reminder that school ethics disclosure forms are due by April for the board members.
Okay, can I just say?
Hi, Christine. Christine is with us.
Sorry for the delay.
I have to turn my nightlight off or something. You're on, we can hear you.
What do you know other boards do? Is it more of a role of the board negotiating with the unions? Or is it the administration with the CSA? I just wanted, I'd like to know, see what other districts do.
Or Charlie can reply to that.
Sure, there's a mix of how it's handled. Generally, a lot of the information for negotiations or proposals that they... I turned it off.
Red light you should see.
Yeah, there was a red light.
Okay.
Okay. So it really depends. The majority of the daily operations information that's going to impact negotiations comes from the administration. Certainly, board members can be involved in the negotiations process, will be part of the negotiations team. See, we have a negotiations committee. There's really a lot of options you can do. Majority, though, again, of that daily operational information, how the contract is working, you know, where areas would maybe be addressed or responding to proposals maybe made by the association, a lot of that's going to come from your administration. But certainly, you know, some districts will have a couple of board members on a negotiating team. Some may have negotiations handled with administration reporting back to the board. Certainly, the board always has to, in the event of any agreement, approve it. So the board has the ultimate say over any contract, whether or not the board will enter into it. But you have flexibility. But like I said, generally, a lot of the bulk of the information and guidance on where things are going usually comes from the administration. But certainly, a board member is always welcome. Does that answer it?
Does that answer your question, Christine?
Yes, thank you.
I was just going to add to that and say, are they typically invited to all the meetings, the board members?
It depends, again. There's no black line rule. Oftentimes, some of the initial meetings where if the solicitor is serving as your negotiator, we may get some information on a less formal basis just on our side, getting things together. And then it depends on how the structure for negotiations is set up, whether it is, you know, a lot of sit-down meetings with the association. Oftentimes, things are just brokered back and forth between union representation and the board's representation. So again, there's not like a set, "This is how it's always done. This is the way it must be done." There's flexibility with that.
Okay, so we can see who would like to be the liaison for that on the board?
Yeah, that's generally how it happens. And always at the end, as I said, the board has, gets a presentation. I don't know, this is my first time here, so I apologize. But to the extent there's any folks that are conflicted, they would have to stay out of the negotiation, the discussion process until depending on the level of their conflict to the very end of that board. Once the association approves a structure or revised agreement, then it goes to the board for final approval.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have to wait till the current negotiations are over and start on the next round, or is it possible to start now?
Like I said, there's no hard and fast rule. I don't know where you are in your current negotiations. It's not just pinch hitting for tonight's meeting, but...
Yeah, I mean, without getting into much detail, because we can't, we're in the final phase. But if anyone wants to sit in, the next time we sit down, they're more than welcome to.
Yeah, that's not going to derail negotiation.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Moving on to Finance. Can I go recommend a motion to approve Finance Items A through F?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Filicello, yes. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Berry, yes. Ms. Zalesdok?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Ms. Savler?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so Facilities, recommend a motion to approve Facilities Item A. Can I have a motion?
Second.
And are there any questions? Roll call vote.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Zalesdok?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Ms. Savler?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Technology, there are no Technology Items at this time. New Business, is there any new business at this time to discuss? Okay. Seeing None, Informational Items, the following items are being presented for informational purposes. I would just like to say that I'm glad that everybody's looking at those reports because I think they're meaningful. Personnel, recommend a motion to approve Personnel Items A through H. Can I have a motion? Motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Now, are there any questions? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Zalesdok?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Ms. Savler?
Yes, but I'm not seen from 7:00, 3:00, and 4:00.
Thank you. Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we have to hear, recommend a motion to approve Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Items, presented and discussed in the executive session. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? May I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Zalesdok?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Ms. Savler?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Policies and Procedures, recommend a motion to approve Policies and Procedures Item A through F. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Just real quickly, I know we talked about this on Friday, but the shared OT. The contract was sent and that all looked good. But so, so I guess just to be clear, when would the start date be? So after the April meeting or prior to? Because, just wondering.
It says right here that they would be appointed at the April 26th meeting.
And that start after that meeting?
Yes. And I believe that's what the contract's setting through June 30th. And then the next one will pick up from the bottom here.
Okay, thanks.
And I just have a question on the Comprehensive Equity Plan. Where can we find a copy of that? I know this is just a certification attachment.
You know, I had it for the work session, in case someone asked to see it. I have a copy on my desk. We usually just keep it in our drive, but you're welcome to see it. It's a few years old because we didn't have to update it. I think the state's coming out with some new parameters that we have to include in the new one. So for now, it's just a statement of assurance that we have one. But if you need to see that up, we can have someone email to you.
Is that updated every three years somewhere?
It's been more because there, now we just have to do the statement of assurance. But we think, we heard the state's coming out with some new parameters that we're going to have to include. So next year at this time, it'll probably be a new plan.
Is it a very lengthy document?
No.
Did you send it to the board?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions? And may I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Zalesdok?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Ms. Savler?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and Informational Items, the following items are being presented for informational purposes. Enrollment, is that what you want? No, okay. But again, these informational, I'm glad the board is looking at these reports, especially the nursing reports, because they work hard on those. And I think it's important that we look, the enrollment, fire emergency drill reports. So thank you for that. Okay, we are at Public Comment. The board now welcomes the public to comment on any educational issue or school matter of community interest. Once again, each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes to make their statement. No one may speak more than once on the same topic. You are required to give your name and address before speaking. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, seeing none, moving on to Board Forum. Would anyone like to speak?
It's me. I, I.
Yeah, Dr. Snyder.
I would just like to take a moment to thank everyone. You made it possible for me to join remotely this evening. Laura, particularly, and the Martucci's for helping me get connected.
You're welcome. I hope it's going well for you and the family over there in Virginia.
Thank you.
All right, just for the public to know, if you're here, we did a lot of this work on Friday. So it seems like we're just voting yes and no without any thought. We did a lot of work on Friday. We've been doing board sessions prior to the meeting. And so that's a very useful meeting, even if you go back on YouTube and watch or to attend. Because that's where we do discuss a lot of things. And then the interim, the administration does a good job of getting this information between Friday and Tuesday. So we do ask a lot of questions usually. I wanted to highlight the young lady that she mentioned World Down Syndrome Day. Most people know, but I have a son with Down Syndrome. He is a first grader, his name is Mateo. And just two quick facts that a lot of people don't know about Down Syndrome. Number one, why it's called Down Syndrome is because the guy that discovered it, his name was John Lyndon Down. His last name was Down, so they call it Down Syndrome because he discovered it back in 1868, I think. And it's on March 21st, because people with Down Syndrome have trisomy 21, which is a third copy of the 21st chromosome. So 321, March 21st, is why they celebrate World Down Syndrome Day. We are very fortunate to have excellent teachers, paraprofessionals in this district. Tonight, I was especially proud because Ms. Dawn was my son's aide at one point. And she did a phenomenal job. And Ms. Lainey is in my pre-K, my son, who's three years old, in the pre-K school. And both are excellent assets to this community. And I know we have so many teachers and paraprofessionals. So I just wanted to say publicly that, you know, I'm very proud to be part of this district. And finally, someone brought up about the state aid and the governor's discretion. The governor of New Jersey, if you don't know this, is a very, very powerful position. Probably the most powerful governor in the entire United States. Mostly because they can go line by line in the budget and scratch things out that they don't want. So when it comes time to election time, there's, you know, the governor's election. If, and I talked about this before, if you don't agree with policies or if you think a certain district isn't getting what they deserve, that's the time to really have your voice heard, is when the governor's race, every four years, 2025, I'm not counting. But that's when you really can make a difference when it comes to what state different districts get and what policies are passed down from the state. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I was going to say the same thing about the work session, which I think we should probably discuss what we're going to be doing for next month. So the work session is on YouTube. It was labeled 314, but it's now correct, it's 310. So if you want to go back. And then just a couple of things I wanted to mention. We did lose another person that was very, very, very important to this district. Her name was Margaret Bennett. Peggy Bennett, if you all remember her, most that have been around quite some time, yep. She is actually related to my husband. She passed away recently, very unexpected. But she was the secretary for 30-plus years to George J. Mitchell. The namesake for our school district. So I just wanted to, you know, rest in peace, Peggy, we love you. Thanks for your service to the district. Also, I just wanted to say kudos for the 20K for the American Heart Association. That's awesome, great job. And then the last thing is, I just want to say to the building principals, your newsletters are awesome. Great job. I mean, the information in those are great. We get it home in the folder, it's sent to email addresses. There's just such great information in there and they're really well done. So I'm sure you have somebody who helps with that, but they look great. So kudos, Peggy, yep. Christine, would you like to, would you speak?
Not to diminish all that I can use words. I was in the middle, today is Pi Day, 314. So for all of our math accelerations.
Can you say that again with that?
Yes, remember that. But I'm having a little delay, so it's kind of hard for me to speak.
Today is Pi Day.
But does anyone have any feedback on the work sessions? Do you want to continue that?
Yes, we need to discuss that. I, for one, am not in favor of Friday work sessions.
I would agree 100%.
I'm agreement with work sessions, Friday is a weekend. So, I mean, if that's your only day, then I still think work sessions are beneficial. But I prefer not Friday.
I would like to continue meeting as a policy committee about the transgender policy, which we have to meet with Dr. McCooly and the attorney. So we could set that up. We'd like to set that up between now and the next meeting.
Very soon, too. You know, it's working for you for everyone.
That'd be great, okay. Any other policy work we need to do? I mean, have we decided as a board whether to move ahead with policies that are still existing or just do the work sessions? I don't think it can all be done at one work session. Any opinions on that?
Whatever.
It's not a trick question.
Next, the other?
We can be done in one seating either. I mean, I need a couple of business, a couple of proceedings to go ahead and answer that. I did just want to go ahead and just say something also. Unfortunately, there's another person we lost in our district as well. So it's, I know, I hate to, I feel like it's like one, two, three punch, but it's been actually not a great month for my family. But this is just somebody for, that did affect, that was in our district. Just a few words about Lisa Jane Vizicarera. She was a paraprofessional in our district at ECC. She did lose her battle of cancer on Thursday, February 23rd. She suffered terribly, awful. I know Lisa for about 13 years now. I've treated her in my office time and time again. For the past two years, she was in the chair about every two months because we just needed to keep the bacteria low in her mouth. So over that time, of course, we became closer and closer. From the moment I met Lisa, she always had a warm smile on her face. Always had a positive attitude and without doubt, was one of the kindest souls I've ever met in my life. Her family was the absolute world to her. I would like to extend my sincere condolences to her husband, Tony, her sons, Kevin and Eric, her daughter-in-laws, both Rachel and Roxanne. In the light of her light that kept her going, her grandson, William, who she met. I'm going to get to the first birthday and then the second birthday, and he just turned three, so. Yep. And to her parents, who should never bury a child. I extend my condolences to them as well. The world is absolutely, has lost a light, it's definitely less bright. I just wanted her rest in eternal peace. She absolutely deserves it, she just absolutely suffered way too much.
Thank you for sharing that, so sorry. Condolences to all the families who lost family members. Thank you. Anybody else like to share anything? Okay, I just need a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Ball of favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye.